Shall we get started? May eleventh, twenty twenty-two, seven P M. Call the meeting to order. Commissioner Sheila, will you lead us in the flag salute? Secretary, would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Engel.
Here.
Commissioner Magnavowski is not here. Commissioner Nishimura.
Here.
Commissioner Turner Mike.
Here.
Commissioner Sheila.
Here.
Vice Chair Van Duker.
Here.
And Chair Flowers is out.
First agenda item.
Public comment. Under Government Code, Section five four nine, five four point three, members of the audience may address the commission on any agenda item within the jurisdiction of the commission or on any agenda item. Those wishing to speak on non-agenda items will be called upon at the beginning of the meeting. Those wishing to speak for or against an agenda item will be called upon after the presentation by the City Planning Division and the applicant for that agenda item.
Are there any speakers for non-agenda, non-agenda items?
We have none.
Okay. Read the next agenda item, please.
That's consent calendar approval of the minutes for March ninth, March ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I will make a motion.
Second.
Do we vote on the, on the, oh, item six A is now moved to the public hearing?
We need to vote on the minutes.
Yes, vote on the minutes.
Chair Flowers is absent. Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Nishimura.
Aye.
Commissioner Turner Mike.
Aye.
Magnavowski is absent. Vice Chair Van Duker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sheila. I'm sorry, Chair Sheila.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Sheila. Thank you.
You stripped me of my title.
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Here.
Thank you.
First agenda item.
Public hearing, San Juan Event Center. Sixty-four, sixty-two forty, San Juan Avenue.
Vice Chair Van Duker, I think there was a discussion about moving the regular item as a public hearing. It could come after this, but is that the will of the, of the vice chair to, to move item number six up from regular calendar, calendar into public hearing?
Oh, yes, we can, we absolutely can do that. So proceed with.
We can still, so we'll still take this item five A first, and we'll follow it with, which would become item five B, which is the amendment to the general plan housing element. Just for the commission's awareness, it was noticed as a public hearing in the paper ten days in advance, and it should be titled as a public hearing in the agenda. So I think the appropriate thing to do is, is to move it up. The, the public has, has all the proper noticing and is fully aware of, from, from a transparency perspective of what's going on.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're proceeding then with six A, correct?
Actually, we're gonna go with five A first, which is the San Juan Event Center.
Got it.
Sixty-two forty, San Juan Avenue. The applicant is requesting a use permit to repurpose a ten thousand eight hundred and forty square foot tenant space within an existing retail center. The space will be used as an event center for the purpose of church gatherings, weddings, reception, receptions, and similar events. The proposed maximum number of occupants for any event is two hundred people. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA per section one five three zero one. Project Planner Eric Singer.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. As Stacy mentioned, we'll be discussing the San Juan Event Center, proposed at sixty-two forty San Juan Avenue. So looking at the existing center that's at that location, it's a retail center. It's located at the junction of San Juan Avenue and Sylvan Road, just around the corner from City Hall here. The space in question is located at the north end of the center. It's a ten thousand eight hundred and forty square foot space. It's currently vacant. The other tenants in the center include a caterer, a salon, dental office, a small grocery, and a bookstore. So this is the site in question. Looking at the aerial there and the space, the tenant space is outlined in yellow and dash marks. Pardon me. The trash receptacles for the entire center are located at the north end of the complex. They handle the waste for the entire center. Due to the fact that there's gonna be increased waste generated by this proposed operation and new regulations related to organics collection, staff is required to condition that the applicant shall build a new trash enclosure at the north end of the site to handle the potential increase. Additionally, the increased use in the center calls for a condition of approval, which states that the applicant should be repainting and providing a graffiti resistant coating to the retaining wall that runs the east end of the complex, essentially fronting that length of Sylvan Road. So the proposal for the space itself is to repurpose that ten thousand eight hundred and forty square foot tenant space. It's to be used in, as an event center for the purposes, like Stacy said, of church gatherings, weddings, and receptions, and similar events. That's what was outlined in the project description. The proposed maximum number of occupants that is gonna be conditioned to be allowed at the site is two hundred people for any given event. So the type of use that's being proposed is technically classified in the zoning code as a meeting facility, public or private, which is what triggered the need for the use permit and in the zoning designation of shopping center. It's defined as a facility for public or private meetings, including community centers, religious assembly facilities, so churches, mosques, synagogues, et cetera, civic and private auditoriums, grange halls, union halls, meeting halls for clubs and other membership organizations, et cetera. So these are the types of groups essentially that would be allowed to rent from that space. Anything that does not fall within one of those categories would not be able to use it as it is, is permitted through this use permit process. There are no structural modifications that are being proposed. There's no kitchen facilities that are being introduced. All food and drinks for the proposed event would be catered from off-site, and vehicular circulation is expected to remain the same, as there are no new parking spaces or changes to the existing parking layout proposed. In addition, no activities related to the event center would occur outside of that specific tenant location. It would be available for rental seven days a week. All events are proposed to end by twelve A M., midnight. The majority of events starting at five P M. on weekdays and twelve P M. on weekends. The operating hours for the event center, they're generally off-peak operation hours, and they're offset from other uses within the center. Additionally, due to the lack of residential uses within close proximity to the center, any increased noise or traffic circulation during the operational hours would have likely minimal effect on the surrounding community. So looking at parking for the center, the parking requirements for a meeting facility, public or private, are three spaces for every seat that's provided. So based on that two hundred person maximum, sixty-seven parking spaces would be required. The retail center has ninety-eight total spaces. And again, due to the offset hours from the existing tenants in the center, parking is anticipated to be adequate to serve the proposed use. The engineering division has also conditioned the project to remove and replace the existing driveway entrance from San Juan Avenue to meet all current city standards and accessibility requirements. And lastly, the onsite intersection of the drive aisles near the driveway. So looking at the entrance here, it's kind of a large square that was provided as an inset on the staff report, should be striped to keep clear to minimize the stacking of vehicles along San Juan Avenue. This is especially pertinent during either the beginnings or endings of events, as vehicles are coming in and out of the center. As Stacy mentioned, this would be considered exempt from CEQA under section fifteen three oh one pertaining to existing facilities. And again, there are no structural modifications or major improvements proposed to the center itself. So these are the recommended motions, and staff is available to answer any questions you have.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff?
I have one question. Why would you have a ten P M. cutoff time for music? Seems like if they were having a wedding reception, party would just be getting started around ten o'clock if they've gotta get out by midnight.
That is definitely an understandable question. Mainly has to do with the city's noise ordinance. So the quiet hours for the city start at ten P M. So typically, most businesses have operating hours between seven A M. and ten P M. An event center being a use that would potentially cause for higher noise, you know, decibel levels, we would want to limit the potential for that to disturb the surrounding area. Granted, it is commercial uses that surround the center in the immediate proximity, but sound can carry. There are some residential uses just north of the retail center that's directly northwest, so the Safeway Shopping Center. There are some residential uses that abut the north end of the Safeway Shopping Center there, including, I believe, a senior living community. So it's mainly out of concern for potential disruptions to the surrounding community and to be in keeping with the city's noise ordinance.
And is there a name for the facility? Are there gonna be new signage up?
My understanding, based on the applicant's proposal, is that it's just gonna be known as the Citrus Plaza Event Center. The applicant is here and can speak to specific branding of the center, but that was my initial understanding based on the proposed project description.
I understand the, the one for three for parking, but I am, I am concerned with the two hundred, the limit of two hundred people in the event center. I don't know how well that will be managed, and should it go over, it's gonna take more parking spaces. And when you count those spaces, do you include the ADA spaces?
We do.
Okay. Also, on the issue of that there's no structural being involved, it's really not necessarily a big issue for this commission, but potential for modification for fire sprinklers, for other, other requirements in terms of an event center that may require some structural work of some type, or plumbing, or what, or electrical, who knows what, down the line, correct?
Yes. So the project is conditioned prior to the issuance, or I should say, the prior to final occupancy of the center. The applicant will be required to submit plans to Sac Metro Fire, to our own building department, to the Citrus Heights Water District. They are requiring sprinklers throughout the center. In addition, they would be required to comply with all change of use requirements essentially, because this is technically considered a change of use for that space. So whatever building code requirements that are necessary, they would have to comply with those prior to granting a final occupancy of the space.
One last question relative to the driveway. Is that, it talked about it needing to be done to comply with city standards. Is that due to slope and maybe merging with the sidewalk, or accessibility issues, or?
My understanding is yes, that is the requirement. Our city engineer, Leslie Blumquist, is here. She might be able to answer a little bit more specifically, but my understanding is yes, that is the intent, is to ensure accessibility standards are met and that everything is to, to current codes.
Thank you.
Does the, any other commissioners have any questions for staff?
I do. I, reading here that the vehicular circulation will remain the same because there's no new parking. That, that's understood. But if you have an event, the traffic of that circulation is gonna be significantly different, right? Coming off of San Juan at that curve seems a little daunting. It's already not a great spot. So, so that one is a little bit concerning to me, just because even if you have an event of a hundred people, that's a lot more than twenty people going to Joanne's and two people getting their nails done. So I kind of would be interested in what kind of study we did do about traffic and, and how that is being addressed. Secondly, I don't know how far I'm, I'm supposed to get all my questions out right now, right? Pretty much.
Any questions of staff you can ask at any, at any point.
Okay. So in, in regards down to being consistent with the general plan, it says it's physically suitable for the type and density. Once again, I'm concerned about that traffic. Secondly, under the general plan, talks about it would not be detrimental to public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare, material injury, materially injurious. I am, or place an undue burden on other tenants. That was another piece. So I have two questions in that regard. We've got a lot of event centers in Citrus Heights, and I don't, I'm curious, I'm concerned that, I mean, Rush Park rents out for these kinds of events. We rent out the community center, White Lotus, the Little Schoolhouse. There's, there's many places, and I just am curious if that's going to really take away from some of that, the revenue for those other event centers. So I would wonder about that. Undue burden for the, the tenants, I would ask maybe that, if there's a way to condition that the other tenants have a couple of designated spots for themselves, because if there is an event, especially on a Saturday, if you're gonna start at noon instead of at five, that's nails and little mini marts, that's their business. That's prime time. So I would just say that if there's a way to condition that, that they get even a couple of spots each reserved for them to where their, their clients don't have to try to find a parking spot, right? If there's a, even a, if event is, if there's no event, feel free. But while events are here, this is designated for the little nail lady, or the nail persons. And so those are my two, those are mainly all I had. I do think it's a little bit of a dangerous spot right there. I didn't drive by, so I'm not familiar enough with how you can come off, off of that road and make that entrance. I didn't look at it, so I'd maybe like that addressed. Or if you just have to, you're going in, that's great that you're gonna have a keep clear, but we know how that can go. And so what if it's not clear, and now you do have backing up on, on San Juan, the light's green, and it's not that far from the light? So I wasn't really that comfortable with a bunch of people entering like that. So those are my questions.
So speaking to the traffic study component, a formal traffic study was not required. It did not meet the threshold essentially for trips generated that would have required a formal traffic study. Leslie might be able to speak to a little bit more detail on kind of those specific parameters around when that's triggered, or I guess more specifically what the expected circulation might look like. I think one of the major things that we were considering is that the hours of operation are primarily offset five days out of the week at least from the remaining uses in the center. So on the weekdays, it would be, pardon me, five P M. to, to twelve A M.
Yeah.
And then in addition to that, you know, if there are additional conditions of approval that the commission would like to introduce on the project, that can be done. It would just need to be done. Within the motion, you would recognize the additional condition. Staff can draft the condition to your wording, and you can pass that motion as amended. I'm sure Ryan could clarify on that as well.
Is this on? Okay. Evening Commissioners. Leslie Blumquist, city engineer. Just speaking more to the traffic. I did take a look at this. It does not generate enough trips to require a formal study, but just looking at the location of the event center, the driveways, and the adjacent intersections, nearby intersections, it does not have, and is unlikely to have an impact on those, specifically given the time of use that the events are proposed. Weekends, off-peak, later in the night, we don't have as high a volumes on San Juan, Sylvan. The concern I did have was during the dismissal or the end time of the event, if cars were to stack on the exit and block those getting in, that would be a concern, which is why we are requiring the keep clear. The other thing too, is there is already a left turn pocket in order to turn into that driveway, which does allow stacking for about two cars. So knowing the number of trips generated, where they might be coming from, that turn pocket will likely hold the number of vehicles waiting to turn left at any given time, as long as that intersection driveway is clear to allow them to come in. If we do experience some issues with it not remaining clear, that is something we can work with the applicant on some enforcement or education for those that are renting the site on the rules of the, and, and information to send out to those that are renting that location.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure.
How's this spot? Is driven by the, driven by this location in numbers like day and night? I think Commissioner Engel had an excellent, excellent observation. What I would be concerned about is the configuration of the road as such, that as cars sort of come down to the north and the south, if cars are pulling out of this driveway and trying to turn left on, on the San Juan, the configuration of that road is sort of lined in terms of that corner, especially at night, it makes it even more dangerous. And obviously, pardon me, something that is gonna be operating on, on weekends at night, letting it go anywhere else. That's kind of a significant concern. Like I said, I think it's an excellent point. Had not thought about that and observed that. So not only in the daytime, but especially at night. So if this goes ahead, I think we do need to keep an eye on it, making sure officers to observe, you know, if you start seeing any accidents or whatever.
Sure, and we can definitely discuss that and with our police department once it opens. The horizontal curve along Sylvan, San Juan, I'm never really sure what this portion of the road is called, allows though, it has that two-way center left turn lane. So when cars are turning left out of the driveway, they only have to cross one direction of travel at a time. So when you're leaving, you're looking to the left, you're crossing those two lanes, you're getting into that center two-way left turn lane, and then you're increasing the visibility of those southbound vehicles where you can make that determination to merge. So with that added benefit to the roadway too, and the kind of minimal generation of vehicles that are gonna be using this site at any given time, I, I think it's something that we can keep an eye on, but it's there. You're welcome.
And one last comment, if I may. If the commissioners look at condition of approval number eight, this was introduced specifically for any potential issues that might arise. Specifically stating sure any nuisances arise at the site from the late night hours, parking, loitering, or other health and safety issues. The applicant shall provide security measures onsite acceptable to the Community Development Director and Chief of Police. If after reasonable notice and opportunity to correct those problems, any public nuisances remain onsite, including any health and safety issues, the city can impose reduced operational hours, require a security company to provide onsite security during hours of concern, or other operational or site improvements deemed necessary to eliminate these nuisances.
I do have one more comment. To the southwest side of that auto shop, I trust that that will be cleared up, because they have U-Haul trucks parked blocking the driveway currently.
There is an inquiry in with the property owner currently, and planning is working with code enforcement to resolve the issue, as it is not a permitted use as it currently stands. They would require.
Because people parked along San Juan in front of that building would be blocked in if traffic were stacked up trying to get out of that exit, and you couldn't go around the other side of the building because it's blocked by U-Haul trucks.
Oh.
Okay, so that will be addressed by the city.
Yes.
If the commissioners don't have any questions, I'll open the public meeting. Is the applicant present tonight, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Commissioners, thank you so much. Thanks for the consideration. Mr. Singer, thank you so much for the awesome presentation. I think it was spot on. So I'm Maxim Yurtzen. I'm a managing member of Stonewater Holdings. We purchased the center almost about a year ago, and maybe some of you guys have noticed, we've been revamping it quite a bit. So the center is somewhat nostalgic to me. As a kid, when we moved to the country, we, we used to actually go to that little convenience store there. So as I was purchasing it, it was just, it seemed like a shame to me, the fact that it was run down the way it was. So my hope was to, to make it something, something better, nicer. As far as the event center is concerned, we, I've done a lot of events myself, even using the city's facilities here. I used to run a, a company that would have Christmas parties, different things at the center here. So really appreciate Citrus Heights and where it's located locally. And, and I think another center, especially such as this one, I know one of the questions that came up, is it gonna, Commissioner Engel brought this up, is it going to deter people away from other centers? I think that specific Citrus Plaza Center is, is very niche from a standpoint of kind of demographics that use it. The store that's in there, including the dentist, and the bookstore, and actually, I think all the tenants in there, the catering spot itself, they're all Ukrainian folks that run those businesses. I think it's gonna be primarily used by that community, including, I believe, the event center as well. Some of the interests that we've received was from folks that, that wanna run that type of facility within that demographic. But I believe it'll be used by everybody to some degree, but I think primarily within that. So I don't think it's gonna deter too much business away from, from others in there. But it, it's a great spot for a center like this, so I'd be excited to, to bring it to that particular community. Another question that came up was if it's gonna impact the tenants that are currently there. I actually spoke to every single one of the tenants, and they've, they've, some of them actually asked for this, like the catering business and the grocery store, they've actually asked, they brought up the idea to begin with to me, like, hey, can we please do this here? This would be amazing. It'd be synergistic. I've spoken to the other tenants in there as well, and they feel the same way, because it would attract more energy to that plaza. That also speaks to the branding. I believe it would be prudent to call it Citrus Plaza Community Center, or Citrus Plaza Event Center, because that Citrus Plaza name already has an established brand within the community. That's why we were thinking to call it that. And again, that would create more synergy for the plaza itself, and would strengthen the businesses that are in there currently. As far as the parking, I believe on the picture, if, if you wouldn't mind bringing it up, some of that parking in front of the, that shop mechanic place, we, we didn't even include that parking or count it in our account, in our count of parking, because the way they're using it right now, basically the center has no ability to use that parking. So we're kinda not counting on that parking within, within our plan. And it would be great if the city was able to address some of those issues. I think the circulation would improve. Also to the question of ingress and egress out of the, the center, there are two prominent exits, one off onto Sylvan. It does go through another center, and another one onto Greenback, which those are two points of ingress and egress that are prominently used as well. So I, I don't think that that exit onto San Juan is gonna be overwhelmed by the, by the use purely because the other, depending on where people have to travel, I think the other ones are gonna be used as well, so.
That's providing the U-Haul trucks get out of the way, right? Is that, is that the path?
So the, right now, the path of travel for cars is, is right between the shop space and where the property line for the center begins, kinda right in, right within that, that space. That's usually how cars drive. I've, I've been there many, many times, and that's what I typically observe. Nobody goes all the way around them. It would be great to clear that up, because that would just add additional flow, but for now, that's how. um, for now, that's how people use it.
So they do come off that small little street, that little green back?
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, it would be amazing if you guys, uh, you know, considered this and, and approved it. I think it'd be great for, um, for the center, it'd be great for the city as well, for the community.
Um, do you have a reciprocal parking agreement with the other shopping center?
Uh, we do not, no.
So if they were to block that off, you would no longer have that access to Greenback or to Silvan on the east side?
Correct. I, I don't believe it's prudent of them, or that they would ever do this, because it would, uh, hurt the businesses that are within their center as well. Uh, there's quite a few businesses that actually face out towards San Juan within that center. I think they would have a, a problem on their hands with their own tenants if they, if they attempted to do that.
Okay, and would this be a nondenominational facility?
Correct, yeah, it would, so as of right-
Does a church use it? Any other churches could use it?
Yeah, apologies, yeah. Um, as of right now, there's actually no, uh, thought process of having a church use it. Um, the thought process is strictly for events of, of any kind, uh, but if there was ever a need or if, if, uh, any denomination church wanted to utilize it, they certainly could. My goal as well is, is to, uh, not individually rent the center out, but to allow somebody who's a professional at this to, to lease out the center to others. Basically, lease it to a tenant that specializes in leasing out event centers. So not to take that on, um, myself, because I, I primarily own real estate and don't have the staff to, you know, rent it out daily and, and, and things such as that, so.
Do you know, you have?
No, I'm satisfied.
Really?
That was helpful.
And, and any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you guys.
And if there's no other comments, I would, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution, Resolution 22, determining the project is categorically exempt from SEQA per Section 15301, existing facilities of the California Department of Public Act.
I'll second.
Vice Chair Van Duger, since everybody's present and there's no one online, you can ask for just, uh, uh, audio or roll call vote. I'm sorry, not a roll call, but a voice vote.
Okay, uh, I've, I've never seen a voice vote here before, so, uh, how, uh, how do we, go, go ahead, Stacy, would you proceed with a voice vote?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. One more.
And one, one more, do I, uh, do I have a?
Sorry about that. Getting ahead of myself.
There we go.
Uh, I'd like to move that, oops.
There we go.
We approve a use permit to allow an existing 10,840 square foot tenant space in a retail building to be converged into an event hall for a maximum of 200 people for the purpose of weddings, church events, and similar occasions located at 6240 San Juan Avenue, subject to the findings contained in the staff report and attached conditions of approval.
I'll second.
Stacy, would you, uh, call the vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All oppose, any opposed? Motion pass.
Any determination by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council by filing a written notice of appeal, and the appropriate filing fee is $250 with the city clerk not, not later than 10 calendar days after the date on which the determination is made. Next agenda item, please.
This is going to be item 5B. We are moving it from regular calendar amendment to the general plan housing element. The local hazard mitigation plan, L H M P, was adopted by City Council on February 24th, 2022. To remain eligible for FEMA grant funding, staff proposes to amend the general plan to include specific language in the community health safety chapter that references and provides electronic link to the most current local hazard mitigation plan. The project is categorically exempt from SEQA, Section 15061, B3, Project Planner Eric Singer.
So this item should be hopefully a little shorter. Um, it's pretty straightforward. Tonight's actions that you're going to consider would be to, um, essentially incorporate specific language into the community health chapter of the general plan, functions that are, as our city's safety element, um, that directly references the local hazard mitigation plan that was adopted by City Council in February of this year. Uh, you would be forwarding a recommendation of, uh, approval of this draft amendment and finding it exempt from SEQA. As just a quick, brief overview on the general plan, again, every city and county in California must have a general plan. It's acting as the foundation of the constitution for all local land use planning. There's comprehensive and long-term goals, uh, for the physical development of land within the city, and it provides policy direction for the city on numerous topics. Looking specifically at the local hazard mitigation plan, on February 24th of this year, the City Council adopted the most recent, uh, L H M P update, which is, the L H M P itself is developed by Sacramento County in concert with a number of jurisdictions within the county. Um, it's updated every five years. Um, in order to remain eligible for FEMA grant funding, the city must amend its general plan to include specific language within the community health chapter that references and provides an electronic link to the most current L H M P. That proposed language is included, uh, specifically as a redline, strikeout format in Exhibit A of, uh, the attachment for this particular staff report, as well as within the body of the staff report itself. So again, the recommended actions for, uh, this body would be to recommend to the City Council, uh, that they find the project exempt, uh, from SEQA and to approve this, uh, particular amendment. And again, staff is available for any questions, myself and, uh, Leslie as well, if it's specific to the L H M P. Thank you.
Do any commissioners have any questions for staff? And so I'll open the public hearing. And is, is there any comments on this agenda item?
We have none.
Excellent, and I'll close the public hearing. Uh, and we do vote on this, correct? Okay, then proceed, please, Secretary. Uh, uh, motion, sorry.
Yeah, I move to recommend that the City Council finds the project as exempt from SEQA per Section 15061, B3A.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion pass.
I move to recommend that the City Council approve the proposed general plan amendment to include the local hazard mitigation plan into the community health section of the general plan as presented.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Next agenda item.
That's going to be regular calendar item 5A, determination of general plan consistency Sienna properties. Review and make determination the disposition of 12 city-owned properties along Sienna Drive in compliance with general plan per Government Code, Section 5402. Project Planner Allison Bermudas.
Good evening, Planning Commission, Allison Bermudas with the Planning Division. Um, my item before you tonight, um, you're going to be making a finding determining that the disposal of properties on Sienna Drive are consistent with the general plan or with Government Code 65402. Um, and to note, this may seem like a familiar item, as we did hear this very similar item in March, um, we took the same action, uh, but since that action was taken in March, there has been a change on the disposal of the properties, um, and so we need to re-declare the properties under these new, um, with the items, um, with the information we'll provide you tonight. Um, so as a reminder, we do, the city does own 12 vacant properties on Sienna Drive. Uh, we are underway, um, of redeveloping those vacant properties. These properties were owned by the city's redevelopment agency, um, where they demolished the blighted units, uh, back in 2010. Since that time, we have planned to replace the housing units, um, on the street as, uh, as affordable units on Sienna Drive to replace those units that we demolished, and then bring housing back to the street. Um, but before we can proceed in the disposal, um, of the properties to a developer, we did have to take these actions. We took them in March, um, but since that time, um, there's 12 properties, and three of the properties are now going to, uh, could potentially be used for the redevelopment, um, for a water well. Uh, they need to bring, uh, water services to the area, increase groundwater well, um, so some properties may be used for that. So because of the difference in the uses, um, we just have to re-declare these properties. We're using the same findings, the 65402, uh, but I just wanted to be clear that some properties, um, will be used for the water, and some will be used for housing. Um, so your role in this is to find that this disposal of the properties, um, is consistent with the general plan, um, and I will provide you those findings in the general plan, or the goals and policies of the general plan that state that is consistent. Uh, so here's a map of the Sienna properties, um, altogether through 2008 through 2010, um, we purchased, uh, 15 properties, um, where the buildings were demolished. Three have since been redeveloped, uh, one into the park and two into the Sienna Center, leaving the 12 vacant properties. And part of that, uh, disposal, as I mentioned, would be to bring affordable housing back to the street. The general plan designation for those properties here, as you can see, is medium density, um, and housing and utility services such as a water well are allowed uses under that general plan designation. So the general plan, uh, does provide a number of policies. You saw these in March, um, that support, um, new housing, uh, for all types of users and underutilized lands, um, so the disposal of the properties for housing is consistent. In addition, the new policy that is shown, um, is Policy 33.1, um, that says work with our utility service providers to make sure there's adequate service, um, for all, uh, properties, um, and so that has been added, um, to tonight's action as a support of findings, uh, that disposal of the properties for water service, um, is consistent with the general plan. So provided to you is a resolution, uh, for adoption, 22.05, uh, making the, the declaration that the, um, disposal is consistent with the findings of Government Code 65402, um, that is consistent with the general plan. So as a reminder, um, we're not reviewing the project tonight. That will come later, um, to you later this year as, um, project plans are submitted and, and application is received. At this point, um, the city is just looking to sell the properties to a developer for the future housing and to the water district for their well, um, but before the city can take any purchase or s- any sales action on the properties, you must make these findings. So this is, uh, one of the first steps that's required, so those negotiations can continue, um, and a future development can come, uh, before you later. The removal of the three properties, uh, for the water district, um, they will have to do their due diligence, uh, to confirm that there is water service, you know, there is groundwater in the area, um, so that testing will take some time, but we have noted in the resolution that, um, should they find that there is not adequate, you know, groundwater, then all properties would be used for the housing development. That's all I have. Happy to answer any questions. I know it's kind of confusing, uh, because you want to think that this is a project, but actually we're not. We're just determining that we can dispose of these properties, um, and it is consistent with the general plan. I do look forward, um, later this year to bring you a project, um, as housing comes back to the street, that, but that will be later this year.
So it would be negotiated with the Citrus Heights Water District?
Yes, they're the, they're the service agency interested in the three properties.
Do any other commissioners have any questions for staff?
I do still have a clarification. You were helpful today. But we are in fact undoing something that has been done. Is that true? Like, we weren't here when Sienna, that whole piece happened, and I know the public was kind of involved in that, and so I'm just kind of curious if, if our, the city's promise to them, we're, what we tear down, we're going to build, uh, you know, build back, and are we now undoing, we are undoing three of those, right?
Um, yes, but the end result, um, is not much different. Um, so we are, we're obligated to return housing to the street, um, and we have, um, done, we will still be returning housing to the street, and we'll be meeting the number. We have to return 12 houses to the street, um, and we will anticipate to bring 20 back, um, when the housing is developed, is the intent.
Okay, so we're-
So we will be meeting our obligation, um, that we had to return housing.
All right, and then my other question is, I don't know what this water, is that, what does that look like? So if they have this, is that a big round thing above ground? Is that what that is?
Um, essentially, but it is concealed, um, in a structure, and should that proceed, the structures that they build now, um, look like a house, so there are a few, um, in the neighborhood, um, one on-
Bonita.
Bonita, thank you. Uh, Bonita Way, if you ever drive down there, you'll drive down, it looks like a house, but there's a fence that's kind of, that would be the only indication that it's a well, because it doesn't look like a normal fence, uh, but it's a house with a well, and that's typically what they build when they're going to build in a neighborhood, so it blends in and is com- compatible.
So it's not obnoxious?
Yeah.
Okay, I was curious.
If I could follow up on that just a little bit, because I, we were, I'm talking to the water district about it, and it, and it's looking at, you know, being underground and the noise not being an issue, so it would be very discreet.
Okay. Yeah, that's, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2022-05, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Citrus Heights, California, adopting its report and certain findings required under Gov- California Government Code, Section 65402, for the disposition of certain vacant properties located on Sienna Drive.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Next agenda item, please.
Staff comments? Any comments? No comments from staff.
All right, so at 7:47 PM, I will close the meeting.